Okay, welcome. It is the fourteenth of November twenty twenty-three. This is the regular meeting of the Wellington Board of Education. It's seven oh two and I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We start our meetings with a pledge of allegiance. So if you join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands justice for all.
We start our meetings with and end our meetings with time to hear from the public. So if you would like to join us and be here and present to speak, we ask that you either raise your hand if you are in person or raise your hand vertically. If you are on Zoom, you can do that using the reactions button. You click the reactions button at the bottom. It says raise hand. You can also start the video and come on the screen where we can see you or physically raise your hand on the screen and we can see you from there. If you would like to raise your hand that way, we welcome comment from the public. We ask only that you could give your name and address at the start and keep your comments to three minutes at the beginning of the meeting if you're interested. I am not seeing anybody on the screen raising their hand. No? Okay. So we are gonna move right ahead. If you change your mind, there is always time again at the end of the meeting to comment again. So next we have the chairman's report. A couple of different things are worthwhile. One is that the CAPE conference is on Friday and Saturday. I'm hoping that those of you who are able will be able to though I have found it very valuable in the past to learn both of specific issues and to network in both inspirational and very helpful with issues, for example, of Freedom of Reformation Act and what's what's doable, what's what are our responsibilities of board members. It's a different issue areas. So I highly recommend it. I'm sure that Phil and Brenda have reached out to everyone who needs to do that. A couple of other items, since this is, I'm saying that, are you ready? Since this is my last board meeting, having been voted out last week, I will be handing this off to a new group of people. We don't exactly know who the new group of people are going to be in part, but we know we have at least most of them here or online at the moment. So with that, I would encourage all of you to also participate in any additional board training. There was a law passed this year that's going to require board of education members to get training. That's new, but it's really what's gonna help us do things the right way and avoid lawsuits in the long run. So it's really beneficial for everybody to kind of learn the basics of that ahead of time, just to be sure that we're always doing things on the up and up and not doing anything or saying anything in a public meeting or in private or on the internet or in any other way that could get us in trouble in the long run. So protect yourself, protect the board, protect the town by learning everything you need to know to do things correctly, and that's board training. So I would encourage you, as we have in the past, to have the lawyer come in or CAPE come in and do some board training, especially because we're gonna have so many relatively new members. It's really useful to have an orientation and to kind of bring your your vision together of what the board wants to accomplish. So I think that's really useful. I would also encourage you to start with at some time in the the near future, if you want to wait until after the budget season, that makes sense too, but we have in the past done a workshop on test scores to review both for ourselves and for the public about how how to understand what the test scores mean and how we do testing. There's different levels of testing. We all talk about the test scores as if it were this one uniform thing, and it's really not. It's a lot more nuanced and complicated than that. So I think that the one that we did last year was on Zoom. It was available for the public. I think it's really useful. We're still at the point of transitioning post-COVID that all of the test scores are haven't quite evened out. So there's when you're doing comparison over years, some of those earlier years for comparison are still really impacted by the COVID closures, but this year could serve as a really good second year, but also a base year. Next year will be even better comparisons this year. So in order to understand those, I would encourage you to have another workshop, but that'll be your choice if you're willing to do that. And I would also encourage any of the new board members who haven't done it yet to do a facilities walkthrough. I know, Phil, you've done that with the CIP committee?
No, CIP.
Not CIP. No, no, we talked about that. The board members. It's this board that sends it to CIP. So it'll allow you to get a look at some of the facilities issues. One of the first things we look at before we even get to the budget is the capital improvement project so that we can send our recommendations for what capital changes we want to see done in the next next fiscal year to the capital improvement project that starts meeting in December. So we want them to have our stuff upfront. So the very first task you're gonna be looking at is capital improvements. We know there's a lot to be done. We spent almost all of last meeting talking about capital improvements. So you're all very aware of it, but I would encourage you, if you haven't already, to do a walk through. Okay. I think that's it. I won't I won't drag this on any further. Let's move on to communications.
Sorry, I'm not getting rid of my phone. I'm just trying to put the panel on so you can see people. Oh, it's just that strange.
That's fine. Normally, the app normally the app will just.
Does, but yeah.
I don't know. When you started to talk, it zoomed in on you.
There's a panel on the top and I'm not seeing that for some reason. It's weird.
Yeah, but Phil's not. You should go over and sit by Arthur. You'll be safer on your way from Phil. I don't mind. If you talk from the audience, it zooms in on you too. So just saying, barely warned. Okay.
All right. So there there's a communication from Amanda Doughty, which you received. I think it was emailed to all of you anyways. So you've seen that. It was about the cell phone policy. And then I did want to share, it wasn't to the full board, but there was a communication that came in at four thirty yesterday. I, as you know, I've been going back and forth with DAS, OSCGR about the roof. And I kind of was getting stonewalled a little bit, and I and so I was a little bit firmer in my last email. I got a response from someone who is the director of grants administration, actually signed their name to this because no one has been signing their names to their email. It's just that DAS administration. Nobody wants to own it. It wasn't very helpful, but I'm just gonna share with you that the two things that were on there that I think are important that I emailed back from this, but there's two paragraphs in here. One is the applications for renovation roof project open monthly. Thank you very much. Our office hasn't encountered the same situation, which means our roof projects that were canceled, they have not encountered the same situation. We're the only ones that had projects, based upon what I see there, that were approved and they canceled. First time I've heard that. And this is a new director, so maybe they're wrong, but that's the first time I've heard that. And basically saying, but if you reapply for roof project and the and the project is awarded, you will be awarded with the current active reimbursement rate for your school district. That's not helpful because it's percentage points lower, the roof project has gone up in cost, and it's gonna go to the town. That's not why I'm emailing that. This is the other paragraph that I fired back a response on. Please note that the grant commitment letter was issued on five eleven twenty-one, and the agreement was that the construction should start prior to five eleven twenty-three unless an extension was requested and approved. Our project was canceled. So it's kind of hard to request an extension if your project has been canceled. So I responded back and said, this is very frustrating. Here's our cancellation letter that we received from OSCGR, and we'll see where it goes. My next step, if I don't get anywhere, is I'm gonna jump to politicians because I feel like they need to know if we're the only ones that are dealing with this. This is a couple hundred thousand dollar difference to the town of Willington cost that we have to eat because they canceled the roof project. And we very well, I think we both sat in the meeting, and I'm pointing to the first light woman. We both sat in a meeting with them asking the question, if our project, if we do a new school build or there's a renovation project, what happens? And we were told you will have to repay the remainder, whatever's left. And we knew that and we still move forward with it. So they should not have canceled that project, in my opinion. There's nothing in statute that says they should have canceled the project, but they did. So.
I got it.
Thank you. I'm hoping that I get a different response this time and at least get to talk to someone or meet with someone. And if not, I'm gonna go a different route. I'm sure I can find the politician who would understand this and that there has to be special legislation for a different reimbursement rate. I just think this is is not the best way to handle it. So I want to share that communication that just came in yesterday. It was addressed to me, so I didn't send it to the full board. But this is, I'm going back and forth with them and I'm pressing on this because it's a little frustrating. So FYI.
Thank you for that update. Can you bring Donna up on the screen too?
She's not. But I won't.
Donna, we just wanted to recognize we do see that you entered the room at seven twelve. So we're happy you're here, even if we can't see you. I hope you're feeling well. Okay, we are next up to the superintendent's report.
Yep. So staffing is first. We had a big internal swing here. So the internal staffing adjustment was at HMS. We had an opening in the HMS library. If you remember, the media library, library media specialist, the para left and we hired Olivia Rogalino, who was doing our world language program. She was implementing Rosetta Stone. And by the way, she's absolutely doing great things at the library. It's it's amazing. Once we had the opening in the world language, which we were a little nervous about, Sarah Jean, who was one of our special education paras, said, I'd love to do that. I speak two languages. I speak French. I speak Spanish.
She speaks three languages.
She does. And we said, well, I'm saying two additional, sorry. So we moved her into that role. And then we had, we hired Kelsey Lamb as the para to replace Sarah Jean. So all of those things were filled and honestly, we were nervous about always, all three of them, but it's worked out great and their things are going well. So that's good on the staffing side. This is still the only opening we have, and I'm gonna be honest, I've, you'll hear more about this today. I am I'm holding off on on any more posting for the opening. That's the staff support specialist at Hall School. Because if you looked at the budget, you'll understand why, and I'll get into more detail on that tonight. The facility study is the second thing on there. So that was approved at town meeting on November second. I did have a meeting with QA and M last week to discuss their their next steps in the contract and just was asking questions, basically just how to move forward. They are willing to do an AIA contract, which is that American Institute of Architects. That's like the normal form. Or we can just accept their proposal and create a purchase order. So basically what Rusty said, who's the the primary, said, based on the scope of the work, it's not anything that's, you know, a typical AIA contract. Typically, in this level of work, you would just sign your PO or, you know, create the PO. You can sign the proposal and say and send a quick letter. So you guys can figure out, do you want to do that? I could accept that. You know, I could write a letter accepting their proposal. And if I did that, I would include what I read at town meeting and the things we've talked about. The things that I read at town meeting were those things that were really CIP related with that focus, or we could do an AIA contract that would take more time and pull some folks together to do that. But they fully understand what we're asking for. If they they know that the ten-year proposal's in there, they know the pricing, all of that. If we do a contract and the socialist down, they'll start later, not the end of the world. If we just sign, if I just do the letter, attach the bullets for the CIP portion, which is basically what was in their proposal, and create the PO, they can start the first week in December. Their team would come in and do start their, basically spend the day with me and maintenance crew and tour and interview and take downs. So that's your call. I don't know if you want to which way you're leaning on that. Do you want to do?
Why don't we save that till after the superintendent's report and you can go through all of your items and we can bring that back up. We do have the school building committee final report on here and that's the follow-up to the next piece. So let's fit that under that, under eight D.
Okay, so the food services fund, the meal payments. We submitted, so we are required because we have excess funds, we had to submit a plan for what we were gonna do with those excess funds. As you know, we can use our balance, the folks, the students that didn't qualify for free or reduced, meaning they were full price. They, we could use those funds to pay for their food. We also put in that we're gonna purchase equipment, make repairs and things like that. They sent us an email back and said, all looks good. Just want to let you know that that approval is only good for twenty-three, twenty-four. So we're gonna have to see what happens. If they extend that, we may only be able to use our excess balance for this school year. And then we'll wait and see. And if we have to fight the fight again, we will do that because we have excess funds and it's the right thing to do. So I was a little surprised on that, but I'll keep you updated on any changes moving forward. The next item is the reading waiver. And so we met, this is where the state was saying that we had to pick one of the five or six language arts programs that you must select from. And if you didn't select from them and purchase them, you had to submit a waiver. We submitted a waiver that was about sixty pages. We met with the state and PCG, which is the public consulting group that the state hired to review our waiver. We met with them on Halloween, which nobody dressed up, just so you know, just put that out there. We answered their questions. Part of their evaluation, this is, and again, there was eighty-plus districts that submitted waivers. So we were one of eighty-plus that had a twenty-five minute interview with them. They noted evidence in our waiver that our curriculum had taught phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency in an explicit systematic sequential cumulative manner. Those are their words. And then they asked questions about how we teach vocabulary. That's what we targeted our presentation to them on and comprehension. Those are the two areas that when we got feedback on, we gave them more information about. So obviously, that was Aaron, as director of curriculum instruction. It was the literacy coach and myself, and we just basically went through a presentation about, since we've submitted our waiver, what we currently, what we're already doing, and then since we submitted the waiver, all the new things that are are going into place. And they actually happened to target a couple of those things. We got head nodding. That's all we saw. They don't give you feedback. They just go, okay, thank you very much. And then what happens basically is we learned by, I, we were told December first, we'll learn what happens. I can't tell you what happens beyond that. They say, yes, our waiver is accepted. Our programs are accepted. We can then apply for grant funds, which we're eligible for right now, which are like sixty grand plus. If we don't get our waiver, there's no clear path forward right now. They're, they haven't said you could resubmit, you could maybe a portion of your programs are accepted. It'll be interesting to see what happens because that's an awful lot of districts. So we'll see what happens. Item, I think it's he and yours, the chimney issue. No significant changes in the condition of the the center school chimney, which is good. We did have an anonymous report of mold in that classroom. There was a complaint to Eastern Highlands Health that went in, and so the health inspector came out to inspect and investigate the issue. I will say twice, he found absolutely no mold. He found no mold, he found no mold, which we expected. We are still trying to get someone to come out and wrap the chimney or seal it until the repairs are are can be completed. The last person just didn't show up. We're scheduled again. That will be paid out of the non-lapsing fund. That is the only remediation portion that you're gonna need right now because we can't get it fixed after July one. Part of the issue that's making it harder not just wrapping it is our power lines come right into that spot. And they're right where they need to wrap the chimney. So we have not had any additional water in. There's no new staining. There's no, still no moisture. I did not purchase the dehumidifier, the dehumidifier that you approved. Basically, because when Service Master came in and they looked at remediation, they they tested to see if there was moisture. They said, there's, there's no moisture. You're gonna put an expensive dehumidifier in this room just for show. I don't like doing that. If you tell me to buy it and put it in the room, I'm glad to do that, but I think it's a waste of funds. And you're gonna find out tonight that you're gonna, you might need those funds. So if something changes, I obviously would share that with you. It's still approved. I'm not asking you to change that. But I'm being very clear that I have not purchased that dehumidifier. We still are on track to do that change, the code repair in July. And I'll update you, I, as I have been doing, I sent you an email already. And I've been emailing Eastern Highlands as well, just to say, keep them in in the loop of what's going on. So again, Service Master said it's it's not wet. We did scrape the wall and clean the wall, but there's nothing in there right now that's that we seem to see to be an issue. So we'll see where it goes.
Well, that mean, that repair we paid for out of the, um, the million dollars in CIP.
So my I don't know that answer right now. What I will tell you is you're gonna find out tonight, we did some serious movement of money as far as encumbrances and special ed. I'm really going to advocate not to keep this entire amount, which you approved eighty thousand dollars for the repair in non-lapsing funds. I I really think you're gonna need that money. And so you'll have two choices, which I think is gonna should come up in December. And the reason it's gonna come up in December is when I present you your capital improvement plan in December and you're gonna vote on it, you can either have it in year one as a separate project or you can say, nope, we don't want it in there. And then just let's move it to the selected and report of finance and selectmen and and ask to take it out of the million. The quirky thing about why I don't have that answer too, Anne, is because it's the million dollars could be the roof. Is, so I'm like waiting to see on answers from OSCGR. They say, hey, we're gonna accept your your prior application and you have time to do it in the summer of twenty-four. I'm gonna do the roof and then you should put this in CIP year one. So I'm, a lot of moving parts. It's gonna happen, I think, one way or the other. But you're gonna need the funding.
Just thinking about, I don't know if you want me to wait till the about.
We're gonna talk more about the school building committee and the finances next. So let's finish and go in order. So that was specifically just about the chimney.
Yeah.
Upcoming events.
So we have conferences coming up. We have a half day. The there's all next week is half days for conferences and then the day before Thanksgiving. And then we have a half day on December first for PD. I will tell you those, I'm getting a lot of feedback from staff. I sat in team leaders today at Hall School about the need for additional time because we were doing so many things. I appreciated their feedback today. I know it's hard on families going last year to, last year we did ten days. This year we did six, those half days. I'm hearing from staff that they're gonna be asking, they really would like to see us go back to ten again next year for an additional year to do that work. So that'll be on the calendar coming up. But it's it's tied to the December first PD date that's coming up. The only other item I had was the plumbing request that was also at town meeting, did pass. It was unanimous. So that work is already, we're we're working with EMCOR and other contractors to get that work going.
Okay. Any questions specifically on these items?
I just have kind of one question.
Um, the chimney where the power lines are coming in, making it difficult to wrap. It's, I I can't picture it in my head, but I'm I'm concerned about the idea of power lines coming in somewhere where we're concerned about moisture and water coming in. So is something protecting those power lines right now from?
Their power lines are fine because they're in the rain all the time. It's just.
They're all insulated in the way they go.
Everything was, it's not the, it's just making sure that you know, if you put it, if you wrap the chimney in a tarp and it comes free, it can't be wrapping up in power lines. So that we've got to make sure that part is done right. Number one. Number two is, if it can't be done in that section, there are ceiling options, not that ceiling, but like a yes, spray ceiling. So we're just trying to find a vendor that can come out and do the work.
I was just trying to picture it and I couldn't.
It's like smack the hell in the middle of the chimney. It's.
Any other questions, Tracy or Donna, if you want me to wave your hand or come online or come up with new, if you have any questions? Okay, so seeing none, we will move on to the financial report. You want to put that up on the screen?
Yes, I will.
Then I will have to swap around a little for.
And this will be, the whole package will be online tomorrow. So we have applied our Title I grants, which we write and we do put them in for salaries for intervention. That's in Program One and Two, so that the staff funding has been applied. I'm gonna come back to Program Three in a minute because you can see where it's at. In Program Four, we encumbered funds for club transportation for the year for HMS. Programs five through nine have very minimal changes. Program ten has been adjusted for our current staff. And Donna, the business manager and I, we we think we're gonna be in the good for about forty thousand dollars in health insurance savings. That's just where, you know, with new staff coming in, staff leaving, whoever takes it doesn't take it. That's where we believe we are today. I will tell you that if someone mid-year says on staff says I need insurance, that number will change because they have the right to do that. If someone leaves mid-year and a new staff member comes in, you have to offer insurance. If they take it, that forty thousand dollars will change. So it's nice to know there's a buffer there right now and it might be used for special ed, but it's it's too early to know if it's actually gonna be used. So Program Three, and I'll put on the actual view so you can see Program Three at the top, and the impact does in the total education budget at the bottom. This is a big shortfall. I have not experienced this as superintendent. I will tell you that I had this exact project when I did my superintendent class at Central. It was this exact thing. What do you do? We do have a plan, but let me just walk you through. So obviously, this is the big adjustment. I told you that we would be encumbering the funds because of concerns around this, and it's really the initial outplacements. That's the biggest impact. These are not final bills from vendors. Okay, we've encumbered what we believe, we know, we've worked with these organizations before. We've had bills from prior years. So we've encumbered what we believe to be a relatively accurate number. And basically, what happens is when you do that, we have a shortfall of five hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and one dollars in special education. Okay? Now, we are expecting three hundred thousand dollars back in excess cost funds from the state. That's typically we get, it's, that's the number that is everything over about your your ninety thousand dollar mark. Everything over that amount, you get about between seventy and seventy-five percent back from the state. So that's the excess cost. So we think we're, we've calculated that we're gonna get back about three hundred thousand dollars. Okay? That leaves the shortfall down to two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. And that shortfall at two hundred and eighty-two is has the assumption that we don't spend another dollar in special education. That's not real. It's November. Okay, so that two eighty-two is probably closer to add another twenty thousand, between twenty and forty thousand is a shortfall. Because again, that's not reasonable that they're not gonna spend. They have assessments that they're gonna do. That's not incumbent. Right? So obviously, this is something Donna and I have spent days on, Marcia and I have spent days on. We're watching this very closely. We're limiting purchases. We do have a plan. So don't panic. The chimney is part of the plan. You approved eighty thousand dollars out of the non-lapsing fund. And what I'll tell you is you might only use that for a deposit, and then even that might disappear when, if you get the project, you can just put the money back in the non-lapsing account because you have to pay for this. We have other avenues that we can make adjustments on. I don't want to use other programs to freeze other programs at this point to make up the difference. Because what happens is you do that is every program's impacted. Right now, it's just special ed. I will tell you, I'm on a hiring list. So I'm not gonna hire a new staff member as support staff at Hall School because that's twenty-five thousand dollars that I can apply to special ed. If that person were to, if I did hire that person, they came into family benefits, I just lost forty thou, the twenty-five thousand out of the benefits because that's the cost for benefits. So my forty thousand dollar window also shrinks. I just lost forty thou- the twenty-five thousand out of the benefits because that's the cost for benefits. So my forty thousand dollar window also shrinks. So. I've got a buffer there. What I will tell you. You have about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In your non-lapsing account. That will almost entirely wipe out. That shortfall.
Combined with the.
Between the non-lapsing, if you don't, after excess cost. So I'll do the math. This is how the math is in my head. You've got, I'm gonna call it three hundred thousand dollar shortfall because you've got two eighty-two. I'm gonna add back in twenty thousand because special ed is still still gonna spend some more money. You're about three oh two. Subtract fifty thou- uh, subtract two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, your entire non-lapsing account. Which is from to pay for the two out placements, it leaves you a fifty thousand dollar shortfall. That's about what you have in your insurance. That leaves a ten thousand dollar shortfall and that does not impact any other program in here. So there's a lot of moving parts in this. It's early, but I wanted to show you a little dose of reality. Like, I've been speaking about when you have out placements and they are are after you budgeted. We don't have a placeholder. Your placeholder basically is your non-lapsing fund. The impact is big though. Because you applied a hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year to this year's budget, which means now next year's budget. If there's no a hundred and fifty thousand dollar offset. Your budget is going to be much higher next year. So there's, I'm got some moving parts in this that we're we're watching. Um, and Donna and I are like, ooh, maybe you could, you know, uh, uh, if a staff member comes in nine thousand dollars under budget. Because we hired someone that was less expensive. I'm targeting that type of money to bring this balance down. I prefer not to use every non-lapsing fund be dollar because. It's your only buffer. So. If you do all that, the total education budget is not. There's there's funding in there for all of the other programs. It's not, but I had to show you that. It looks like it's three hundred thousand dollars in the hole right now and I can't manage a budget. That's not true. But Donna and I thought it was important for you to see that. And not apply the excess cost because the first excess cost payment will come in February.
Questions specifically about this part of the financial.
Yeah, okay. So we approved. One million nine forty-eight sixty-eight. Right?
Trying to pro- uh, program three, yes.
Correct.
How were we so off?
Because two new out placements came in after you did your budget.
We didn't know about that ahead of time?
We budgeted for two out placements and we have four.
Okay, that's what it is.
And so when you factor in the cost of our shortfall right now, after excess cost is about three hundred thousand dollars. Divided by two.
Yeah.
That's about the cost of an outplacement.
I thought it was two. I didn't know there were four total.
Yes.
And um. I respected, understand confidentially confidentiality as to even where families and their needs. Can you tell me if any of them will be accelerating that to the school?
No. I I I'm not saying no to you, like I'm gonna share that. I'm not going to share that.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You'll, you will learn that at um. Budget time.
Because we're a small district, we never talk about students in in if there's one or two because it's too easy to pick who they may be.
I know.
Um, but um, especially in a small town like this, but of course, we will have a conversation about how many we expect there to be.
You'll see it.
When we get to the budget section. And things sometimes change. Sometimes children move out of outplacement and are are moved in district. Sometimes families move in. We could have six next year. We don't know.
Or they move.
Or they move out. Yeah, so so so. There there's, there's two steps. There's the step before the budget process. And then there's there, things could happen after we budget again next year. So um, it's the, it's definitely a challenge.
So the challenge to to that point though is. If you maintain four and you only budgeted two, you now in your special ed budget for twenty-four, twenty-five, have two new out placements. And you have to add the hundred and fifty thousand that you applied to non-lapsing. You're in a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase.
On the other hand, we've always said that should we get a surprise like this, that we would go back to the board of finance and ask them for money out of the general fund. The fact that at this point, you're not recommending we do this means that we're giving the town an out for right now, that we may not have to come back to the town. For that amount of money right now.
Correct.
But we may have to go back to the town for that next year. You know, it it's a matter of time.
It's why we have the non-lapsing fund into your buffer.
We've always, we've always, we've always wanted to work on what's actual instead of doing, you know, oh, a placeholder for this, a placeholder for that, and you know. Guessing, we always wanted to work with this close to what the actual numbers were, but that means that there are gonna be years like this.
Yep.
Other questions?
Is this the time for my other question or?
No, we're getting that in a second.
Thanks, I can't see, so.
Yeah, Donna has her head up. Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome. Um. Couple of things. One is. Maybe we should let the town know. About the situation and that currently we think we've got it covered, but so that they have a heads up. Um, about the out placements. The other is, I don't know, since our out placements um, doubled. I don't know if the state has any potential grants or additional funding. Excuse me, since um, you know, we're required to provide these students. With the services.
That is what the excess cost grant is for, Donna, that it it provides some of that already. So we do get that three hundred thousand dollars back, which is more than we would have gotten otherwise, and that's a formula grant. So we do get that automatically. It's not a hundred percent, and in reality, it would be nice if they covered a hundred percent. They 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 have said that they want to and should be covering a hundred percent, and they've only ever covered between seventy and seventy-five. So. Every district in the state complains to the state about this every year. Um, I did have a conversation recently with someone who said that maybe we need to do some legislative advocacy to get the state to increase the cap. On the non-lapsing fund for small districts because of this exact thing that we should be able to have money set aside to as a shock absorber. It is a shock absorber versus some effect. But it's obviously not big enough when you're a small district and two out placements can blow the entire thing and, you know, one's moved.
Or a cap on the cost of out placements in general.
Yeah, if they could, that would probably be the safest. Because you never know, like you said, if you're gonna have two or six.
Donna, I can answer your first question too. When I went to the board of finance um, and requested. The funds be transferred into the non-lapsing fund now. Um, from last year, you had the the money left over. I let them know that we had two additional out placements already, um, and that. It was critical that they accept that and make that transfer because we were gonna need that, those funds for that. So they're aware of that. Um, and as we progress, I will communicate with the the uh, chair of the board of finance just to let them know. You know, if something goes south. Mechanically, you can't count on your non-lapsing fund. And you don't have it in your budget. That might be something where we have to go back, but they they know that this is a very, very tight budget.
Thank you.
Hang on, go ahead, Donna. Uh, you just went off of it, I think. That means you're, okay, go ahead.
So I serve um, on C C M as the vice chair of the education, um, our legislative policy committee. And this is a continual conversation and once again, it's a short session, a lot less to get through. But this very topic is, has been for at least the last four years on our priority list. I'm trying to get through, so there's kind of a conversation. We didn't talk much about the non-lapsing increase for small towns, so that's a good.
That doesn't cost anything. There's no fiscal note on a bill like that. So that's the type of thing you could get past through a short session. So I think that's very new.
So the policy has, um, our our policies are moving forward and advocacy have already been created and accepted. Um, by our policy committee, but that's something to talk about moving forward. And although I'll be leaving my role in that area, I'll be happy to pass along that note so that, um, you know, as they look towards next year, we'll look in that direction. But. The cost of special education and things just like this are what we talk about on a regular basis, so.
Perhaps Kate could be an advocate for that.
They are.
For that, but you said.
And and so C C M as a whole advocates for that as well. So you can see that, uh, you know, that's every town, large and small. Um, constantly for the same thing and, you know, the number of bills that might go down. But so, you know, we we speak on Wellington's behalf there. We've had a a voice for a number of years. Um, we just need all of our budgeters to kind of.
And I think especially in that case, it's more important for small towns than it is for large ones. So maybe the council of small towns might might uh, sign on for that too. I know they they're not always in alignment with everything that C C M does because of the different sizes. My contact is with the Florida Ed member in another small town in East Street, Connecticut, who said, we have the same problem.
Yeah.
And so it's happened time and time again. Everybody has this, you know, once a decade, they have a surprise of some sort. You know, we've never had something where it's two at one year. Um, so we've had some shock absorber, but you know, for a small budget, it's it's not a, it's not a big enough percentage to cover that, so. Okay. So seeing no more questions, we'll move on to um, our new business. So regular meeting minutes um, of October twenty twenty-three, they were attachment two with your board packet. Um, I'll take a motion to accept the minutes.
Excellent.
Thank you, Laura. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, yeah. Any comments or concerns with the minutes, Arthur?
Yeah, so I was reviewing minutes and um. Went to a comment that I made that was reflected in the minutes and it's not at all what I was trying to get at. Um. It reflects that I asked about the H V A grant if with limited possibility of group grant. It's not what I asked. Um, what I asked was, there was a time, we know there's a time limit on the H V A grant. Was there a time limit on the roof grant? I think that's an important distinction to have in the notes because there's no time limit on the roof. There's no money to expire in the roof grant, but there is in the H V A grant.
So your question was was about the timing of that.
My question was whether or not, basically whether or not we know H V A grant money can run out, could roof grant money run out? The answer was no. Um, I think that's an important distinction for these minutes, personally.
Okay, so um, with a comment that is substantial like that, what we do is we um, would add that. Explanation into this month's minutes because we can't really go back and change what was written. So if we accept those, we will add your comment. Verbatim, since we don't have a sitting recording secretary, Phil, will you double check when the minutes do come back that they capture that exactly? Verbatim, so that we have Arthur's comment to make sure it's accurate.
What page was that? And says that.
Yeah, fine.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments on the minutes? Okay. Uh, seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of accepting the regular meeting minutes, um, noting that there has been an addition clarification for the time, uh, dignified by saying aye.
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 Extensions? Nay? Okay, passes unanimously. Okay. Next is the school building committee final report. So Anne, if you wanna start your piece and then we jump to the.
Yeah, um, this is kind of going back to the chimney, um, and also the. The P O versus the other way to work with the company, right? Um, if we were to do the P O, would we still be free to go ahead and do the roof if all of that happened? Um. You you know what I mean? You say we're gonna do, the second option was having a plan. Which, right?
Yeah, we could still do the roof. They're not, they're not, they won't get in the way of the roof. I mean, it's the funding comes out of the million dollars if that's what you're asking. Um. And I can't tell you right now whether or not the million dollars, what's in that dollar amount is enough to cover the two roofs right now.
Okay.
We don't know that. We have.
And the other thing would be maybe since we need the money in the lapsing fund for special ed, maybe we could go to the board of finance for the chimney. If the roof is therefore going to. Use up all of the um, million dollars.
So I think timing wise, I I'm okay with where it stands right now because I think the ch- from what I understand. The ru- doing the roof in the summer of twenty-four is is. Would be very, very challenging. Like, they're out still months and months and months and months.
Okay.
So and that would require us to be able to. Uh, reapply to O S C G R, which is why I'm praying to not reapply. Um, if I could just ask the folks that did the quotes. To update them and give them to O S G G R, we could move significantly faster. And then at that point, we would know. Is the million enough?
Okay.
Um, but again, that's why I say the moving parts i- is. The chimney has to happen in the summer. It's just a matter of, can we do it without using non-lapsing funds?
Right.
It could be in year one. Of the C I P, or it could be out of the, out of the million. Either way. We can get the, you know, deposit, make sure we have the the contracts signed.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, thoughts or feelings about the P O versus the A I A contract? That's the the formal American Institute of Architects of the full blown if you're doing a, you know, a larger project.
My question, you mentioned the benefit of doing the P O over the the A I A. Um, is that it would be faster. What would be a benefit of doing the A I A?
The really formal contract.
It's in part, in part because when, if you remember, when we had the the proposal come in, we weren't happy with the language in the proposal because it didn't match our request, our R I P. So we had said, that's fine, because we're gonna address it in the contract language. So if, I don't care whether it's the contract language or whether it's in the the letter that's signed, if it's in writing somewhere, I think it's fine. But I think that's why people might be more. Leaning towards a full contract because it is more formal, includes all the language. Because it's more formal and includes all the language, it takes longer to develop. And we lose the window of any outdoor work once the snow settles.
Was it why? When I talked to him, he basically said, if you just do a letter. You highlight those things, you say, we're accepting your proposal, here's the highlighted, all of these bullets, this is the, you know, the primary purpose of this is just that. Then, because you can stop their work at any time you want. If you chose after he finished the fifth bullet and you said, we don't wanna work with these people anymore, the work would stop. You wanted to do more, you could do more. So that's. It's just.
Be the same either way, or if you had the contract, you'd have to finish the whole thing.
No, you don't have to finish the whole thing if you have the A I A at any point. When you have a contract, if we, if it. For us, we're accepting their proposal. But we could stop, we if we didn't want parts one and three, we would just tell them, we don't want parts one and three. And we would document that for them and they would say, you know.
Okay, this is what we.
It's in writing. They don't care as long as it's in writing. So if, that's why I say, if I wrote a simple letter and just said. We accept your proposal, here's the amount of money, this is the priority, I copy the bullets that I read into the the items and and. Give them the P O number and off we go.
So between the contract and a P O. Um, you're writing in what you want to be done. In the contract, is it legalese? Like, are lawyers writing it all?
Typically.
And in the P O.
You're gonna pay for.
We're writing it specifically what we want.
That's correct.
Is there a cost associated with the A I A contract that's not associated with doing a P O?
My time.
And the lawyer's time, so if you do a P O.
Well, that's what I said, is is the contract, then there'd be a cost associated with the lawyer.
With the P O.
No, no, with the contract.
Yeah.
These are my. Contracts, my P O here.
No cost, the P O letter route is my time. If you go the A I A routes, absolutely.
I'm just trying, I'm trying to weigh what's what's better or worse about each one.
My question about it too is flexibility. Just like the chimney, we might have this big laundry list, what we wanna do. And when there may be another chimney that happens, do we have the flexibility? To add new things to the list?
No, because it's it's whatever that was in their proposal.
How about the P O?
That's the only thing you can access within that dollar amount.
Even with the P O, we can add it in the P O.
If you want, you you could increase the P O, but you'd have to go back to the town.
Right.
Or you'd have to find money in your budget, which you don't have. Or you'd have to use money out of your non-lapsing account, which you don't have.
Okay.
So in the end, you'd have to go back to the town to add more scope if you wanted to, but wouldn't.
But we'd ask, we'd ask them for a comprehensive plan. If we haven't, if we have another chimney, we're gonna address the chimney right away. It's not, if the report isn't.
It would be a new.
It's a, it's a different piece. I mean, the the one place where we might wanna go back. Out and expand the scope of this is if they think they come across something that might be, it's that is something where we have to open the walls and do a more intensive study. So.
So before we do either one of these, we have to have our list of everything that we wanna do.
No, we already have.
You have that list.
Yeah.
Donna, I see your hands up if you wanna come off of mute.
Yeah, so the quick question is, if Phil adds. The list to. The proposal. Do they then sign it? You know, is there someplace where they sign off and accept that? That because we're actually tweaking their proposal. Um. So that we know, yes, they accept doing that for the same price, or are they gonna be able to come back? And say, all right, you've added. Six things that we didn't think were included, and so this is a different price. I just wanna make sure it's clear. And so this is a different price. I just want to make sure it's clear that we're getting what we want.
This, this is exactly, exactly verbatim from their proposal. So this is what I read at town meeting. And that is a hundred percent what is from their proposal that's tied to the capital improvement projects, the things that we were looking for.
So then I'm a little confused about why we have to add a list.
Um, it's just a safety valve, so then it's in writing explicitly from our side too. It's not that we have to. Um, if we, if if we were the lazy type of people, we could just do a PO and, you know, it would move ahead and it would get done. Um, but because, because we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's to make sure we've got everything. Clearly communicated, including this in a letter with the PO would be one additional. Formal communication that's there. It doesn't require sign off on both sides the way a contract does. But in accepting the PO and accepting our money in the job, they are accepting what's in the letter.
Correct.
So it's an implicit acceptance. They don't have to explicitly sign it and give us a piece of paper with their name.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other questions?
And this was after the. Um, second time and talking about and clarifying, right, because.
This is, this is straight from their proposal.
But 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 it's from their proposal, but it's not including all of the stuff we didn't want. This is a subset of it.
Oh, okay, yeah.
We took out the stuff we didn't want.
Right, okay.
And left that. Yeah, yeah, you're right.
And they are very aware of that.
Yeah, I like the PO option because it's faster, especially if you're gonna include that in their book. Because we've already had a bit of a communication problem that makes me a little bit nervous, but if that list is clear and that's from their document, then.
It is from their document.
Does anybody feel strongly that we should go with a contract more formal and take more time? No, I think everybody wants to see things move ahead. I think that's your, your guidance. No, we don't, no, no. Um, that's just guidance on how to move ahead with that. However, this is a little bit broader conversation about the school building committee final report. So um, I have received a draft copy of the school building final report. Um, that they have decided they want to share with the members of the three boards to allow us to comment back on it. Um, if we had wanted to before they issue a final version. Um, so I have that and I'm going to be sharing it out with EYS that you get comments back within a week. Um, because I'm no longer, I could be sitting in this seat a week from now and you will not have a chair, I'm gonna ask you to to send them to Bill. Just in the meantime, if there are any edits. Quite honestly, it's a very, a rare process that someone would ask for comments from people from the board. Because we have two representatives from the board who are our representatives in doing that. Think they're just covering all their bases and wanting to be very inclusive and very transparent. The report is not public until they release it, so it's not really fair for us to say, oh, by the way, did you see this report? But I think it's a nice thing for them to do to offer a chance that their comments are, or if you, if you read something, you think it's unclear. You know, and you just think that the, because the school building committee's been in it so deep that the outside reader might be like. I have no idea what that means, or you used an acronym that's not explained. So if there's something like that, that's really useful information for them to have to make it clearer. So if there's something that that you come across, I will share that with all of you via your your board emails. Um. And take a look if you'd like. If you don't want, that's fine too. Uh, lots of people have had their eyes on it. I realize it is Thanksgiving week and I don't want to be giving homework. And down the door, but um I did want to let you know that there is that option if you're willing to to take a look to see if there's anything that you think could be more clear. Okay. So uh, keep an eye on that for your in your inbox. Okay, moving on to new business, cell phone policy.
Well.
I know, hang on, I'm swatting. Uh, Donna, do you want to come up? You you had asked to speak on this issue.
Yes, I will, and I'll do the best I can. I had a conversation with a teacher out of district who teaches middle school. And it sounds like they're having the same kind of issues um we're having as far as low test scores and things like that. I said, so, so what do you think is the biggest contributor to the problem? Like what needs to change to help the kids? And they looked at me point blank and they said, cell phone policy, which is not what I was expecting. Um, I said, what do you mean? And they said, look. The boards need to have a policy where the kids, if they have a cell phone. It is. Not in their desk, not on their person. It can be in their locker and their backpack. They can have it during lunch. But. When it's in their desk or on their person, it is a huge source of distraction. And that is a real problem. And then we got. A letter. From Amanda, totally unrelated to my conversation with this other person, that she probably doesn't even know, um. And I'm thinking, well, if somebody who's in the trenches with students is saying, this is a huge problem. To me, it's kind of a no-brainer to put in, and I don't even know what our policy is, but, you know. We need to, excuse me. Have something where. There's some control. And and not saying that the kids can't have it for the school bus ride or during recess. But really, they should be interacting with each other. They shouldn't be videoing themselves and taking all sorts of selfies and pictures. They're at school to learn. And part of learning is learning how to interact with each other, how to look at each other in the face. Not have, not have a screen six inches from their nose all the time, um, and so I'm thinking that. This would be something that could possibly help our test scores go up. Our kids learn to interact with other people, um, their peers. The students that are older than them, the students that are younger than them, the people that are on staff. Um, so. I think it's a good life lesson and it sounds like it might actually help. So that's why I thought we should discuss it.
Okay, um, so just in terms of overall process, we do have a cell phone policy in our policy manual that's online. And everybody can look at that and review that at any point. And our process for reviewing policies when there's an issue is we take, we have that subcommittee that goes into things in in depth. But I feel like Donna, you haven't yet even looked at that to know if that's um. That's where the issue is. I mean, I think philosophically, I don't think there's anybody in this room who would disagree that. Cell phones have changed the way we communicate and not all for the good. Um, I see it at work. I see it um in, I, this morning I was um at a parking uh light, at a stoplight. And all of the UConn Hartford students are walking across the street at a stoplight and not a one of them was looked up. Like, how did they step over the curb? Like, they had all these people around them. It's a lovely day, a little chilly, but they could have, like, been engaging with the world. And then I must have seen fifteen students with not one looking up. So I don't think that philosophically. Anybody is uh would would say that it is made um, made it easier for us to connect with one another in person. Especially at the middle school age when we're learning social skills, et cetera. Um, but I do feel like maybe this is a problem that the policies are not where the problem is. I think the the problem is um a lot broader and a lot bigger. So I think maybe what we should do, if you're okay with this, Donna, is to send this on to the next board when the policy committee reconvenes. To put this in something to review the policy and look at it then, because you and I are not gonna be here on the next policy committee. And um, I seem to be giving out homework to all of you and all of you. So.
I would agree. I would agree. I will say that between Amanda's letter and then, um, you know, when, when the TikTok video had been posted. Um, from one of our students that happened in school um a bit ago. So I know there's, whatever our policy is, I'm sure it doesn't include those things. Um, and that way, so I agree, it can be. Shared with the next board, um, but I don't think it should be ignored. Thank you.
Just an FYI, tomorrow, um, I think it's tomorrow evening, um. The middle school is having a parent program on cell phones and social media. So it is being.
I went to one of those when Amelia was in middle school and it was fascinating about some of the different apps that were available that. Of course, as an old buddy, daddy, I was not up on the newest apps and it helped me. Amelia didn't have a cell phone at that time, but it helped me as she was getting ready to go to. To ninth grade and we were considering whether or not she should get a phone and what that should look like and what our rules were gonna be for her to have the phone. I found it really helpful.
So Donna, that may help address this to for you.
Okay. Uh, Arthur?
Um, so. I understand, Donna, I mean, I've not looked at the policy, but I did. Uh, fifty-one thirty-one dash eighty-one is your policy on electronic mobile devices.
Right, because remember there's, it's not, not just phones, it could be many tablets, there's lots of formats we wanted to.
We have one for IBS too, but. My biggest concern about this is this policy has, was adopted on. Twentieth of twenty twelve. And there's been no modification date since then. And the first line of this policy is teachers may allow the use of student electronic mobile devices in their classrooms. So if you're going to have that and and have it not be a distinction between cell phone and everything else. I think that immediately has to change. Like, I I think your, if this entire policy is is eleven years old. And it was a a world difference eleven years ago than it is now. Um, because phones were not nearly as useful as they are now and did not nearly have capabilities that they have now. Um.
Are you saying because more of the phones are smartphones and have more capacity?
Well, that's not even, I, I mean, there were smartphones eleven years ago, but they were dumb compared to now. I mean, because the things the phones can do now.
You'd probably say that about my phone.
Blows it on the water, um.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I know how difficult it is to write policy. Um, I do policy for E O Smith. But this absolutely needs to be addressed immediately because there really is no. It's it's almost, the way this is worded, it's almost allowing against other.
But that's what that, the way you said that to me, and I have it, I don't have it in front of me, but um, what I think I heard you said was that the teacher has the capacity. To choose if and when.
Sure.
They allow that to happen. So you would take away the teacher's ability to use that as a tool if they wanted to?
A hundred percent because. You, if the teacher could provide me with an example of something that the students absolutely need their phones for in their classroom. Then I would say, okay. I think you'd be hard pressed unless they're teaching a social media class, which I don't think we have. I mean, you'd be hard pressed to find something that they would need their phones for. It couldn't be replaced with either a calculator or something on the meeting board or anything else that they they can teach. I don't, I don't. See, like, I know there's some things in the high school that the phone is for. I was actually, I was actually a part of that. Um. I don't see it in middle school and I I've seen it be a problem in middle school. I I would. Yeah, I would revoke the teacher's allowance on that unless they could provide an example of here's why he's getting me to have their phone in my classroom. Because I'm doing this and I'm a show dancer. That's, that would be, that's my stance. I'm not your policy.
Okay, so I, you you clarified what you're saying, okay.
Yes.
Um, so I, is there any opposition for why we need to delve into this deeper tonight?
No, I just, I wanted to clarify that we we.
I have looked at the policy.
Yeah. Um, I would argue that our teachers are capable, well-trained professionals and um, phones are tools. They can be used for good, they can be used for evil. And we have to help our children learn how to navigate in a social world. Not only um how to use the calculator buttons, like when you turn your phone sideways, there's a whole bunch of buttons on there. I don't even know what they do. So I probably need that lesson too. But um, in addition to that, that helping them understand. How to, how to not only use certain applications, but when not to. So for example, when, when is it appropriate to not depend on a source of information or when not to? And a lot of that can happen in a larger format on iPads and other places. So I'm not saying the phone is unique. And not every child has a phone, nor should they have a phone. And that's a parent's discretion. So it's not, we're not saying that every child must have a phone. But I would argue that taking away the teacher's discretion. Is hindering them for no reason. The teachers have not come to us and said, we need help, we need you to stop this. And if they did. I would, I would certainly want to hear from them. You, am I correct in that? I haven't heard that.
There's also typically, there's another layer of policy that would be in the student handbook.
Okay. Yeah. So, so um, I think we'll, we'll just move this.
Donna, that's right.
Oh, okay, okay, uh, first, I do, Laurie, her question, Donna, go ahead.
Um, if we did decide to look at the policy, I would love to have the teachers look at the policy and make their recommendations. On the student.
It would be really interesting to hear what the students would have to say for themselves, because they obviously have a different opinion than we do.
They wrote a pretty good. They, they are the ones that drafted the majority of our dress code policy. And did a pretty good job.
Fair enough. Okay, Donna, I see your hands up again.
Yeah, I would just like to follow up with what Arthur said. Um, you know, we provide. Necessary computer equipment to all the students. We don't provide cell phones. So this is their personal equipment that they're choosing to bring to school. There needs to be um limits on it that are appropriate. I'm just told you what a teacher told me um about it and, you know. Parents need to be teaching their kids what's appropriate and inappropriate on a cell phone. The school should be teaching what's inappropriate and appropriate on our, our computer equipment and, um. And I am concerned with. Allowing children, remember they're children, to write policies about stuff that had. Could have significant impact on the lives of their peers, should they choose to tape and post something that's inappropriate. So I think that the adults still need to stay in the room and it's, it's, it's a great thought. Until you get some of the uh responses on what they think is appropriate. And I don't want to put a teacher in a position of having the teacher against. The students. It's much better for the board to be the quote-unquote evil ones and give the teacher. The, we're just enforcing what the board requires.
Uh, and of course, Donna, the board is not abdicating their responsibility for setting policy. That is our job, is to set policy, not to micromanage their work, of course, so. But it is also responsible of us to hear from other people, um, and that includes the people most impacted by it. And I would love to hear from kids as well about what makes sense, especially if they have a thoughtful conversation. And some of that has to be structured and supported by the adults in the room. I can tell you that in Europe. Children as young as five have impact on policy decisions because they are required. As the people who are impacted by those decisions to provide impact and it is made much better policy. Um, especially in the area of uh child abuse and prevention and children in foster care. That even young children have thoughts and opinions that if we take them into account, we can make better policy. We, the policymakers, can make better policy if we listen. So I would urge us that in the, whatever the process is, I should say, I would urge you, sorry, forgot. To uh, to, to, to have, to have an inclusive, have an inclusive conversation and listen to people. And then make, make good policy based on a broad decision of what's happening in Willington. Because we can only make policy based on what is important and impactful here. We might get signals from other places that make us, you know, raise our eyebrows and want to look closer. But then we'll need to hear from Willington people about the policy of what we want to introduce here, so. Okay, so if if we've kind of exhausted this for this time, I think we're okay.
Unless, I have a lot to say about it, but I am on the policy already, so I. I do have to say. Um. That um, I don't think it's a policy issue. I think it's more of a cultural issue. And when it comes to students, including middle school students. Um, giving them opportunities to experience autonomy and showing them mutual respect. In teaching them self-control and appropriate social um experiences is all part of their growing and learning. And I don't think that. Them having their phones within reason and with teacher and staff support is the problem. Um. I think it's actually the thing in that it allows the teachers to connect with children and say, look, like, here's the. Here's the parameters. If you can function within them, then we'll be okay. And isn't that kind of how? Many laws and rules work in our world. If a particular student or a particular family is having difficulty with it, then maybe they could make their own decision, but um. I would say I think they should be able to have them and we could work with them. Thank, thank you.
Okay. So let's move on then, um, the old business, but there, there's nothing on my agenda, so there was no old business. So we are at the end of our agenda and it is time for additional present to speak. So if you're in the audience and on screen. Um, we welcome you, whether you were in the audience or on screen, to um, raise your hand either virtually using the um. Uh, reactions button. Um, to raise your hand that way or to come on the screen and raise your hand physically so we can see that. Uh, Carrie? The Carrie? Yep, so there we go. Uh, please start with your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Hi there, Carrie Rainville, Potter School Road. Uh, I just have some important updates, um, information from the PTA. First, we have our lime and pie fundraiser, which was an absolute huge success. Thank you so much for all of our supporters out there. We have almost four hundred pies and cookie doughs to distribute over the next week. Um, so I'm just gonna go over some pickup times. Um, starting with this Thursday and Friday, the sixteenth and seventeenth at Center School from three thirty to four thirty. On both Thursday and Friday. And then next week during parent-teacher conferences. Um, Monday, the twentieth from one forty-five to seven P M. And then Tuesday, the twenty-first from one forty-five to four thirty. Um, also wanted to go over our Scripps fundraiser, which is just a gift card fundraiser that we have going on right now through the twenty-third. So if you need any Starbucks gift cards, like I do over the holidays, let us know, we will get you the link. We also have, it was mentioned previously is our tech talk. We um, collaborated with Fall Memorial School. Um, it is an internet awareness webinar tomorrow at seven P M. We have the Zoom link um. On our Facebook group. And um, if you have any questions, I'm gonna give you guys the PTA email address. If you have any questions, you can let us know. We can get you the Zoom link for that. Um, an internet expert is gonna be talking about fifteen different apps and how to prevent online risks and also go over parental. Um, controls and there will be a live Q and A at the end as well. Um. We have the town tree lighting December eighth. Um, PTA has provided two clear ornaments for, per classroom at Center and Hall for the teachers to. Decorate with their students. So we're very excited to see the turnout. Um, for those for the town tree lighting, we hope to see you all there. Um, we have our holiday shop at Center, December fourth through the eighth from ten A M to three. P M. And we're still working out details for the Hall Holiday Shop. Our next PTA meeting is December fourteenth at six P M at the Wellington Library. We love to see new members coming and joining us. And our email is membership.willingtonpta@gmail.com if anybody has any questions for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. I always appreciate the PTA giving updates at the Board of Ed meeting. I hope you're also going to add. A walking club or other physical activity, giving the four hundred pies plus. I think that it should be all ages, multi-generational, that we should have like a, you know, the, the winter equivalent of a fun run maybe that we have in the later in the year. Thank you though. Is there anyone else for present to speak? John?
Uh, John Mitchell, sixty-four, Timberlake. I just want to say while Art was talking, I had many parents texting me, loving the idea of going over and reading the policy. We're just redefining it. Uh, most students do have a cellphone. My daughter's been bugging me since second grade. Most ninety percent of the kids have cellphones. And I know in her current fifth grade, they're like, no, lockers. Stay in the lockers. But I know when they get older, they're allowed to have them. And talking to the teachers, that brings me to next point. Anonymous poll are the teachers, they can answer honestly, see what they want. You know, they want us to make it so cellphones aren't allowed at all. If they think they should have the discretion like it is now, but updated, something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Erica Wyszynski, um, I just want to start and thank all of you for your service to Wellington and your commitment to education and our community. Um, I want to congratulate those newly elected members, wish them well in their service. And really encourage them to take any training available, um, so that they fully understand their role as Board of Education members. Um, having sat in that seat, um, I understand the need for that education. I also know firsthand the tremendous. Uh, amount of time and effort it takes to be a member of the Board of Education. And I want to thank. Uh, Michelle Juset Cunningham for her years of service as a member and Chair of this Board. Your leadership has been invaluable. Guided us through COVID, uh, before COVID, through COVID um, and beyond. Um, and I sat alongside you for a number of years. So I know the dedication you have. Uh, for education in Wellington and your voice will certainly be a miss on this board.
Thank you. Okay, um, I'm not seeing anybody else on screen last call. Okay. You didn't use your full three minutes, so we'll allow it this time. Pretty soon you'll have a seat at the table. You have unlimited time when it's board comment, so we'll go ahead.
Uh, the brick, have we tried, uh, Serpro or anybody like that that can do. Like cleaning up and then re, uh, rebuilding it? Or you can't answer?
We can't answer during our. We will, we will, we will take that under advisement if we haven't already. So, uh, just to be clear for those people in the audience, this is time for us to listen. We don't comment back because then it becomes a conversation. And uh, we could spend another hour here sometimes. So we don't do that. This is a chance for us. And it's always important for the superintendent to be, you know, visibly able to hear that happen. Okay, so we will move on next to the end of our meeting is board comment. So I'm gonna reserve last comment because this is my last class comment, but I will let all of you go in whatever order you want. So. Um, and Tracy and Donna, um, you're both online. Um, if you'd like to comment too, I want to make sure that we can. You know, we can't all see you all the time, but um, if you have comment, just uh. Raise your hand or come off of mute. I can see when you come off of mute. Donna, I see you come off of mute.
I just want to wish the future board all the best and most importantly, all the best for the students' current and future of Wellington. Um, it has been an honor to serve and I am thankful, I think my time for leaving is quite appropriate. So have a wonderful um, rest of the year.
Thank you, Donna. Okay, who's next? Okay, I'm gonna start calling our people. Okay, beyond us next.
My T tag tonight happens to say, every neighbor can be your teacher, which is pretty perfect for tonight. Um, so thank you to all current board members for teaching me a whole lot of things. And I look forward to learning more, participating more um, in the next couple of years. Um, Wellington folks, you can of course email us or fill anytime to address any of the topics we talk about in our meetings. And I certainly encourage you all to do so and get up there and vote where necessary, participate that way too. And I wanted to thank our PTA for encouraging um, community growth. Because that's why we're all here, to be neighbors and help one another too.
Okay, Anne, yeah. Um, I'd like to congratulate and welcome our three new um. Members, Kelsey, Olivia and Sarah, either new or in new roles. Um, I'm. I'm really impressed with our reading waiver and yeah, I'm glad as a, as a guardian parent. I can see it's been very successful in our home. And I really appreciate that. I appreciate all the work that went into it and hopefully it's gonna fly over. Oh, and Michelle. Michelle and Donna, thank you both very much for your, your, your service.
Laura? I'm, yeah, I'm not exactly sure what to say this evening. Um, but I do want to thank everyone that I have served with uh, since twenty twenty. It has been an honor to be on this board. Thank you, Michelle, for your leadership. It's been amazing. I don't know if I will continue on the board or not. Um, but either way. Um, my work has always been for the children, whether they're the children of Wellington or really anywhere. And um, I think one of, one of the next things on the board's agenda is continuing with curriculum. And the history, social studies curriculum, I feel is incredibly important. Um, history and social studies and science have been the neglected and forgotten subjects. And history is, is so incredibly important, especially at this time in. In the United States, that we learn and understand everyone's history. Because history has stories of different people. So to be truly an inclusive um, school district. We have to teach our children the stories of all the people who have made this country and continue to shape this country. Um, so that was one thing that, that I wanted to say that I uh. I wish the new board, whether I'm on it or not, um, well, and to continue to fight for our children and for all children. Because if our children don't learn about what the lives are like for other children. It makes the world a poorer place. So um, it's really important that we teach our children about all kinds of children. But I think that's it. Arthur, Tracy?
That's a mix up on a phone.
Okay, Tracy, Tracy, you want to go next?
Sure, um. I guess I'd just like to say I have appreciated um, you know, serving on the board with those. As the, the team that we've been for the past uh, two years or with, with Christian, just a few months, but um. We've worked well together and I, I wish. Uh, Michelle, well, and um, we will miss your leadership. And um, we'll wait and see. Well, we welcome the new members next month and um, we'll wait and see. Who's on the, who's at the table and who isn't, but either way, um, it's been an honor to work with you as, as so far. We'll see what the future.
Thanks, Tracy.
Been a lot going on for, for a lot of us in the past week. Um, and. That is a drug on uh, for Laura and myself.
You thought it was over.
Not really sure. I didn't have much to say because it's been pretty distracting. Um. Just to clarify for those who don't know, on the original election, Laura and I were separated by a vote, which uh, doesn't matter to our recount. We found out the results that day that we are tied. So we will have a special election um. In the next couple of weeks. I, I, I'm not sure if they will be actual yet. Um. And it's even more unique situation for me because I'm also running for region nineteen and I tied in that vote as well. So uh, it's been, been stressful, but. I think what. Questions me forward is something Laura said is, this isn't really about me or really anybody else. It's about. The kids of this town and the parents of this town too. Um. And it's about working for them and being a voice for them when they can't be here. So it's gonna be another long couple of weeks. Um, but it's another long couple of weeks. I'll fight a hundred times out of a hundred to be a part of. Um, because that's why I wanted to be involved. Um, I, I want to do that, fight for our kids. I want to make it nice our kids, just my daughters there too. So it's gonna be tough, but it's, it's gonna be another, another ride. And I hope that, um, I know we're not gonna have the exact same turnout, but I hope that people will come out and realize that this is. You know, just as important of an election as before because it is about the kids in the future of this town and the future of this town, uh, quite frankly. Um, that aside, now with all the seriousness aside, um. I am coaching uh, introductory basketball, first and second grade. Um, technically. Technically registrations have closed, but if you missed it and you say you want to join, just come down or you can talk to James here. Or you can talk to me on Saturday morning at Hall at nine, um, and we'll get it worked out. It's not a big deal. We have twenty-two kids. Um, so that's good. Um, and come pick up your pies because I'm gonna have a new freezer full of pies.
And you're starting the walking club.
Okay, if I'm not here next meeting, it was, it was a pleasure to serve with all of you for the limited time that I was able to. But thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle, can I make a quick, quick comment?
Sure.
So I, I think numbers are important. Sometimes you, you always make the volunteer comment a lot. That's your, your, one of your standard comments. Uh, Donna, four years for you, um, forty-eight, approximately forty-eight board meetings, forty-eight evenings. She's. Committed to Wellington. You're around a hundred and forty-four. Um, when you put that into context and thinking about what people give up to be on these boards, I'm not sure people really understand those things. So you start talking about forty-eight meetings for a hundred and forty-four meetings. That's significant. And it's, you know, just to both of you, thanks for your time and we appreciate your, your efforts.
I think that's probably not committee.
It's not committees, that's why I said. Some on Zoom, some in person.
Well, I'm just really glad you didn't do that in minutes because that would have been a little, a little too intense. Um, so um, I want to say thank you, as I always do, to my fellow board members, in part because this is what you do because you care about the kids. It's a lot of work. And um, you know, I appreciate that you're willing to step up and speak your heart to do what you need to do for kids. And I think that's really important. Um, but you should not listen to Phil Stevens and be discouraged from running for future. It takes forty-eight nights out because it's very rewarding and it's worth it to be able to have a, a say in, in the work that you do. I started when Amelia was in middle school. Um, and I've seen her through middle school, through EO, through four years that you've come, graduated. So mulat, top of her class in so many different ways. Um, and is now teaching. So we set an example to create the next generation of people who are gonna be great parents someday. We're gonna be able to give back to their communities. She was a, a moderator at the elections when she was here. You know, she was involved in, in, as a full worker. And I think that that's what we do. We want to build good citizens. We want to build good parents. We want these kids to have big hearts. And smart brains and be able to make good decisions. And certainly that's the role of their parents and their community, but they spend a lot of time in school. Only twenty percent of their waking hours, if we're being honest, it's not everything that they do. But we have a, an outsized impact in the work that we do and our influence on kids. And it's really important that, that we're, that we're here and that we come together as a community. Because there's no reason that our boards have to be um, at odds with each other. I think we all have the kids. You know, well-being at heart. And I think that brings us all together as a community and should bring us together as a community. Um, so thank you for all of you, for all of the work that you do and I appreciate you. Uh, Phil, thank you because you are an excellent administrator and you, um, you're incredibly frugal. And every year I'm gonna create this budget and I always say, and what else, Phil? What else didn't you put in the budget that you're not telling us? So I'm gonna be sitting on that side of the table this year saying, what else, Phil? What didn't you put in? So you're gonna hear my voice in your head now because. It's essential to be frugal. And honestly, it's what's gonna see us through a year like this year, when we don't have as many options. Uh, so thank you for your frugality as much as I chastise you for it every chance I get. Um, but I appreciate that. And you put your heart and soul into this work. Certainly more hours. If we were to count up the number of hours you spend in this building, I think your family would um, require you to retire immediately and spend all of your time with them. Because you've already spent your lifetime allotment of hours for this building. Um, so we appreciate that. Um, and uh, Donna, thank you for your service. As, as you're rolling off, you and I should probably start that walking club actually. Because we're gonna have time on our hands that these other folks won't because they've got lots to do. And uh, Arthur and Laura, you know, best of luck in how this plays out over the next three weeks. Um, and whichever one of you wants to join the walking club because you're more time, that's fine too. That'll be great. Um, and uh, I, I want to also thank my family for giving me up for those days and nights. It's not some, it's not a small thing. To ask your family to do without you. You know, that you're leaving to run for meetings or you're done doing things out. You know, even now, you know, you have to coordinate, you know, my people. It's different when you've got small children, right? You've got to make sure there's childcare, but you also have to, you know, hand things off to the other person. And um, that's not a small thing for them to invest in the community by investing and giving me this time off. I don't have to cook on Tuesday night. I'm probably now gonna have to start to cook on, you know, certain nights. Now I'm gonna have to go back to be in, you know. Uh, any club partner at home that I haven't been. But it has been my honor to work with you and I really have appreciated you. So thank you all. Thank you to the community. We hope that you continue to be involved in these meetings. I hope that we're able to continue to broadcast these because I think having these on, on Zoom. Um, even if it's not always interactive, but having them recorded so that people can see them, that's been a really big plus. So I think one of the, the, the. The biggest thing that I feel I've been able to accomplish in the twelve years I've been on the board is our work around mental health and the support that we're able to have. Supports for children who need it, that we've really been thinking about the neediest children. Um, who might not have those needs easily met. And thinking about how do we build a safety net to protect the children who have. The, the least access to that. And I, I think that that's been something. And I I think that that's been something I've been most proud of that we've been able to put before. So um, so thank you with all of you. Um, thank you to the public and all of you here. And um, I think with that, I will take a motion to adjourn. Okay, I think I'm gonna take the honor to be the first person I move that we adjourn at the clock is fixed, eight thirty-two P M. Okay, fair enough. All in favor signify by saying aye. And that was unanimous. Thank you. Our meeting is adjourned at eight thirty-two.